Caitlin Aldrich, how you doing this morning? Thanks for joining us and talking here in the nine o'clock hour.
I am great. How are you?
I'm doing okay. All right, so we just wrapped up the Mason County Fair last week. That happened. The August is here. School is going to be back in session in just a little bit. Has summer flown by? Is it, has it gone too fast? Is it just, just the right speed? What's your thoughts?
It always goes by too fast, but September is always my favorite month of the summer, so I'm looking forward to that.
All right, there you go. I like that. Lots of things happening. You've got the Badger Sunset Cruises that have been taking off. You had the West Shore Bank Rhythm and Dunes Concerts, which drew lots of people. I don't know if you had a chance to go to the concert and dance around a little bit or sing a couple of songs? Did you have a chance to get that experience in?
I did not, not the, not the last weekend, no. We, I had to travel out of state for a funeral, so I missed it. But I did hear, I did hear it was a, it was a great success.
It was, and lots of activities happening. Well, you've got a city council meeting tonight, and based on looking at the agenda, am I right that it doesn't look, it doesn't look too full for the nighttime? Is that fair?
That's correct. Our last two council meetings were two-page agendas, so it is nice to have a one-page agenda again.
Absolutely. Well, we're looking forward to discussing what's on tap for the agenda. Also, something that's resonating out in the community, and that is with Andy's, as it would be. You put a press release out, I believe it was last week or the week before, and, and it was a very basic press release that said, hey, the construction has to come to a halt. The city has concerns, and so we're going to jump into that this morning and talk a little bit about, because obviously, once the information goes out, then the community has all of these questions. And again, I understand that you won't be able to probably address all of our questions this morning, but we'll certainly try to ask some questions to clarify some of the, some of the smoke that is out there, if, if, if that makes sense. So we'll dive into that this morning, too. Speaking of the agenda, let's, let's quickly start there. I have a copy right here, and it, it, yeah, it's pretty skinny, I'll tell you that. I'd like to actually just start with the J.C.'s. They, I believe, are going to present additional information to bring together an idea tonight. Take us through that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, of course. They are looking to apply for the Consumers Energy Grant. I believe it's up to $250,000. That's really the information that we have at this time. They are, they were looking to kind of squeeze in an application last minute, and they were looking to provide more information to city council this evening. If I were to take a guess, it might be related to the grant that they submitted earlier this year, and the, the project they submitted wasn't quite in alignment with the DNR's application, and that was to create an event space in an ADA compliant bathroom facility. So I'm not sure if they're looking to kind of bring that project back into the light again, and maybe do the same thing here with this Consumers Energy Grant, or to propose something different this evening. So we'll find out more tonight.
And I think it would be nice to see them with some upgraded bathrooms there. They have Portageons that they, they work with. And, and I think it's such a, you know, you see, or you hope that you'll see the JCI Mini Golf be here for quite a few years. And so we're looking for that, that help. I, I remember the conversation that they wanted to, to expand a little bit or to upgrade a little bit. And that, is that, do you think part of this process? Or is that kind of a second process, a second avenue that they're going down?
Um, I think that's, I think that's part of this process. I think that they're looking to have, you know, have an event space. There really is a need here. I believe it was a smaller event space for, you know, like birthday parties and, but also a nicer venue space as well, a small space, not something that's meant to be necessarily obstructive of the views of the, of the water and things like that. But just another facility in the area for people to use for different purposes.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. On the agenda tonight, and again, the, the idea is that they will probably be at city council tonight, talk a little bit more about that. And you'll either consider it or move it into like a subcommittee or advance it to another city council meeting. What, what do you expect to happen with additional information tonight?
Um, I, the grant deadline is, I believe their letters of intent are due the 15th. So I believe if they would like city council support, they have to receive that this evening.
Okay.
So I believe they're looking for city council support tonight. They would need council action tonight.
All right, sounds good. On the agenda as well, under your area, is this update about the city attorney on the quiet title when it comes to a utility building? Do you mind talking a little bit about that?
Sure. Our old sewer facility is down next to the Thompson's Marina Building that has since collapsed. We have sold, essentially agreed to sell that building to the tribe. And we went to proceed, I believe, a year ago, maybe even a year and a half ago, prior to my time as the city manager, went to complete that transaction, complete that sale, and we could not find the title. So we are going through a process called a quiet title, where we file paperwork with the court and provide documentation that we otherwise own the property, own the parcel, and the neighbors can contest or not contest that we do or do not own that, that property. And then in return, we will receive a, a quiet title, and then we can proceed with the sale of that property. So we have our attorney, Ross Hammersley, has filed all of that paperwork, and letters have gone out to the neighboring prop, neighboring property owners, letting them know that we are filing, we have filed the quiet title, and asking if they can test that action at all, and the boundaries that we say are our property. And then the next step would be waiting for a court's decision and actually gaining a title to that property, so we can complete that sale.
I know that documents can get misplaced, and time, time is a factor, obviously, when it comes to even, when it comes to city. Is it, is it just, you think that over time it, it got misplaced? Or your thoughts on that? And, and, you know, usually, if we, from a consumer standpoint, if we need a title, we, we, we can, we can apply for it in different ways. From a city standpoint, I wonder what, what that process was like?
So I wish I could answer this question better, because again, this started probably 18 months before my time. But I mean, we're talking a title probably from early 1900s, maybe late 1800s. You know, there are some questions of, did we ever have a title? So, you know, so we're just working through that process. And, you know, there is a process to get a new title, just like you or I, or some, someone else who loses their title, like you stated. And, you know, this is just the pro, the process that we have to go through. So it's, you know, it's taking longer than we wanted to, because the, you know, the, the sale of that property is, you know, going back into our, our fund and, our funds and, you know, being used for other things. So we have that money on the books, and we need to actually complete that sale, so we can, so we can actually bring in that, that money and, and record that receivable. So we need to move this along, and that's what we're, we're excited for this update tonight and to keep this process moving.
We'll see, see what happens from it. Once you get the title, then you can take the next step, and we'll, we'll look at talking about that coming up here in the future. You had a, a closed meeting last week. Was it last, time passes pretty quickly. I believe it was last week. And, and in regards to that meeting, it was the conversation, and tell me if I'm wrong here, was about Andy's right there at Rath and Luddington Avenue. And was, was that the sole purpose of the meeting, if I can ask?
I mean, the purpose of the meeting was to consult with our attorney about the, about the Andy's building and, and to hear opinions from our legal, legal opinions from our attorney. And that was the purpose of the mil, of the meeting. And then when we came out of the meeting, no decisions were made. So that's, you know, that was the purpose of the meeting. And so it was, it was essentially a relatively quiet agenda, right? And, and nothing else happened, but that's, that was the sole purpose of the meeting, yes.
Do you think that we will, and again, closed meetings are specific. Obviously, there's client, attorney-client privilege in regards to that. That doesn't normally, doesn't always extend, and maybe I'm wrong on that, extend outside of that, because, you know, you've got to protect yourself from a, from a city standpoint. That's why you're represented by, by the city attorney. If somebody were to ask, and I'll say it this way, why there wasn't any sort of decision or, or anything to move forward, what would be the reason? Do you mind answering that question, if you are able to?
Um, it's, it's the same as just getting advice, right? You, you, you get it, you get advice from your attorney, and up, up until that date, we couldn't all sit in the same room and receive advice from the attorney without scheduling an actual formal meeting of the city council. So I, I, I was the only one having conversations. And it's, it's one of those situations where I'm, I'm not going to be the final decision maker on, on this specific situation. So it was just bringing all of the brains together in the room and letting everyone hear the advice of the attorney.
Let's, let's get those that are listening and viewing up to speed on this. Andy's Restaurant, right there at the corner of Rath and Luddington Avenue, expected to open soon. But last week, or the previous week, you had sent out a, a press release to the media. We received that, and, and in it, it said that you had halted construction. The city of Luddington had halted construction, because there were some concerns specifically about the pillars that, that are there on Rath Avenue. And, and we have, I'm going to bring this in. It's just some photos of Michael's versus Andy's. And so these are what they, they looked like previously with the pillar and then the reinforcements at the bottom, because as we all know, Michael's was Luddington's own leading tower of Pisa for, for the longest time. And, and I would assume that many were concerned about even walking under the overhang there for, for a time period there. So the blocks at the bottom, and we see that there is a gap between the block and the curb along those four pillars that are shown there. So I'm just going to ask you some questions, and I might be all over the place a little bit. But since the, since the information has come out with this, and the focus has been, hey, we've got to correct these pillars because of snow removal, because of some parking, and I think we have a photo as well showing, let's see if we can go to photo three, seeing these parking spots that were down here, that maybe this was part of the conversation. And, you know, those doors opening up, because we're really not going to see people that are going to be parking on Luddington or on Rath Avenue, opening their doors on, to the, to the pillars. And so, so that part of the conversation, I want you to kind of address as well. So, so let me, let me ask this question. The concern is, from the city standpoint, the, not necessarily the size of the pillars, but the closeness to the street. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct.
And, and then let's, let's go this photo. So this is a photo showing, when it was under construction, that the, the pillar is, and if you, in that green circle there, you can see where the edge of the street is, and that edge of the green, green pillar is actually the, the, the drain there that we see in this photo here. So there's the drain right there. And we can see that there's a bit of a gap between the curb and, and that, and the support. The next question I guess I have of you is, this pole, the poles that come down on the pillar, is that where in the site plan and the, and the city approved this? That that is where the measurement is? Or did the city understand that there was going to be, you know, this, this encasing around it that we see here?
So the poles that you're looking at on the old Michael's building are irrelevant. So they, it, it's, it's not like, it's not like the city said, you can rebuild those poles where they're at. There was a new site plan submitted, and the new site plan that was submitted said the front of those poles, the frontmost of those poles, whether it's... Yep, whether it's, whatever's going to be the frontmost piece, whether it's the post, whether it's the decoration sticking out on front, is going to be one foot 10 from the front of the curb.
Okay, so, so...
So that is, so that is the issue right now.
All right, so if we look at this photo under the construction, and again, it's during the construction process, and this area is obvious, obviously quite finished. This being the edge of the road here, and going pretty much going to, going to go right into that pillar or close by, that's where you saw the concern was, hey, look at the edge of the road, look at the pillar. Somebody on your team, on your staff said, hey, it, it's too close, from, from even just visually looking at it. Is that correct?
Yes and, yes and no. The, as you can see, most of the curb and the road, the sidewalk, everything's ripped out. The pillars aren't done. So a problem, there was nothing for the building inspector to measure until the last thing that was done was in May, when the road and the curb was repoured. That's when we could actually measure the distance between the front of the columns in the curb.
Okay, and...
So it was, it was late May that the city and Andy's team sat down, and we were like, something is not quite right here. Those columns are really, really close to the road.
And when did that conversation start?
Hmm, late May.
So, so now that we are in August, and, and again, I just wanted, because there's, there's a lot of chatter out there, and, and people want to see a business open up, obviously during tourist season especially, to be able to, to get them in the door and want them to come back in the future, to be able to be excited about labor, you know, and hiring and staffing and all of that stuff. Everything that is a, is a economic boost for a particular area. And so there, on the one hand, there is the concern from the public that, and, and I want you to be able to address this. One thing from the public is, hey, this sounds minor. Why aren't you letting them open? You know, and then the second part of that, and so let's address that. And then the second part is, well, whose fault was it that didn't catch this on time? And I think you kind of addressed that a little bit, but let's address the first part of it. Community or, you know, and, and again, you can divide up the community, too. Some will say, hey, let this open. Others will say, hey, you know, money doesn't, can't buy everything, and initiatives, you know, it, it doesn't matter who you are, et cetera. How do you address those two questions and concerns and thoughts coming from the community?
The question being, why not let them open?
Yeah, with that, what, so, so that is the, that is the question that a lot of people are asking is, why is this, if this is, could this be minor in most people's opinion? And why can't they open?
So, I mean, I'll, I'll keep this as simple as possible. And, and, and that is, the simplest answer is, those columns are extremely close to the road. They are anywhere from four to six inches to the, to the road. And all, I mean, all the way up. Those old columns where someone's mirror is...
These right here.
Yes. The height where someone's mirror is, they get real skinny, right? So they really are set back much further. If we, if we're talking, and, and I know nobody likes to talk about this, but if we're just talking about basic safety, someone's walking down the sidewalk. In the meantime, say, say this building opens. Say the building opens, and someone is walking down the sidewalk. And it's, because, you know, the city knows about it, Andy's is aware of it. We're aware of this potential safety issue. Someone gets turned around trying to find the state park, trying to find Cartier Park Campground. They're hauling a trailer. They have extended mirrors on their pickup truck. A commercial vehicle is delivering to a business downtown, whoever it might be. You have someone walking underneath the overhang. You have a pickup with extended mirrors, whatever it might be. They're driving down, they smack into one of those columns. A piece of that decorative fascia breaks free and hits a pedestrian walking by.
Okay, so, and, and that's a realistic scenario. We under...
It's a very realistic scenario. And then you have the other scenario of, we let them open. We go through this process of how are these columns going to get fixed? You and I both know that's going to take months, right? We have to go through Planning Commission. We have to go through Special Land Use. We have to go through the City Commission. We are well into the winter. Our city plow trucks, they plow against the curb. They do that, so as the winter snow builds up, that snow is not building into, the snow pile is not building into the roadway, right? So we're not, as the winter goes on, that snow and ice isn't building up and eating into the roadway, and your traveling becomes narrower and narrower as the winter season goes on. They literally plow against the curb, so you have a clean travel lane, ideally for as much of the winter as possible, right?
Let me stop you there for a second.
Hold on. So when they plow against the curb, their plow hangs over the curb 18 inches.
Okay.
It comes up, it comes up, and it swoops out, and it swoops out 18 inches. That is why that one foot 10 is so important.
Was it ever an issue in the photo that we're looking at right now? Okay, then, then explain.
Yes. Yes, it was an issue. And so they either had to, I don't know, I guess I can't, I won't speak to the past. I won't speak to the past, because I wasn't here, but I know our, our DPW drivers had to, had to alter the way they plowed. So when a new building was proposed, that site plan and the distance that those columns were going to be set back from the road was important.
So, and, and stop there for a second, if you don't mind. So in the site plan, it was discussed between the city and the construction company or the planning that these pillars and snow plowing, and they had to be at a certain distance because of these issues. Those conversations came up during the planning process?
I wasn't there. What I can say is this, on their site plan, it said that those pillars were one foot 10 setback from the curb. So our DPW superintendent at the time was present at the meeting. So whether it was verbally stated, not verbally stated, I don't know. But if, if there was an issue, right? It, it wasn't going to be an issue, because that was a significant, that was a minimum of enough distance setback from the curb that plowing wouldn't be a dis, an issue.
Okay, and so when we look at, when we look at a photo like this, and this being the street, because this, this drain is going to be important, because that drain right there, that's not necessarily movable. Is, is that correct? I mean, that drain where it's there, pre and post, you know, Michael's versus Andy's. If this is going to be so close to this pillar, and that's not one foot, you said one foot 10 inches, is that correct? Okay, so, so that's definitely not that distance, if they were to continue straight, straight there. And of course, we want to, you know, have updated photos and be able to, but, but that's on your, on your shoulders in the sense to do the measurement from the street or the curb to the pillars. So the, so the magic question is this. Has anybody done the measurement, and what is the measurement?
Which measurement exactly?
From the road to the pillar.
Like from the front of the curb to the pillar?
Because you're saying that it was supposed to be one foot 10 inches, correct? Okay, so what is the measurement?
Four to six inches.
Currently, it's four to six inches. Okay.
Yes.
So when that was brought up, what's the response? You know, I, I know if, if I were constructing the business, I would, I would guess two things. I would rely on the construction guys and gals to build it to specs. And so that's going to be, the first question is, is it built to, to the specs that were approved by the city? Or were, was it not? And if it's not, do you have clear paper trails showing that this is what you guys planned, and this is what it is now?
It, it was not built to spec.
Okay, in, 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 in writing, in the map, in the, in the, in the plans, is that correct?
And so, so that's what kind of took so long, from the middle of May until really the middle of July, is trying to work with their team, Andy's team, to figure out maybe what the error was.
Okay.
And I still don't know if, if that's necessarily clear. I'm, and, and this is where I, you know, and this is where I guess my answers will get less detailed. And that's because somewhere along the way, a mistake was made on, on their side. I, I think, I think, and I, I, maybe it was, maybe it was a, a bad survey somewhere along the way, on, on, on their side, which is why at the, at the end of June, the city had their own survey done. We had our own survey done, and then we, we got that survey back. And that's when we started feeling confident that, you know, these, the, the distance is wrong. And, and then we weren't, we, we issued some, some deadlines to ask for some corrective action for either some, some pillars to move or an alternative plan to be put into place to come into compliance. And those deadlines weren't exactly met. And that's when the stop work order was issued. And I want to be clear that the stop work order was issued really to try to get us to work together. We want Andy's to open. We want this one foot 10 setback met, so we can get Andy's to open. This is a significant, you know, investment in our downtown. It is practically done, but we have, this is a, when we say it's a safety concern, that's what it is for the city. It's a safety concern. We want winter plowing season to go well. We want vehicles traveling in the travel lane to be able to do so safely. We want vehicles traveling in the travel lane to be able to do so safely. And we want pedestrians walking on the sidewalk to do so safely. I think Andy's team wants the same thing. So we, that's what we want to see happen here. And I think that we're moving in the right direction. Um, Andy's team has submitted, um, a plan of action. Um, and hold on, I have kind of that written out. Let me, let me read that here. So it looks like we'll be going to some special land use, um, meetings in the next week. Um, and then, you know, possibly a, um, a planning commission meeting on September third to approve a, a new plan of action for these columns. And then if, if those get approved, um, if potentially, you know, either the regular city council meeting, how the first meeting of September, um, and, and to get this moving along. Because we, we would like to see this, this corrected and, and to, to get them open. But it, you know, we, the, we weren't getting, we weren't getting anywhere. There was a lot of finger pointing and not, and, and I don't mean Dr. Reamer. I don't mean myself, right? There's a, there's a lot of parties involved. And when you do get to this point in construction, it is frustrating when, when there's an error. But like I said, that you, there was nothing to measure until that road was repoured in May. You have new curb, you, you have all of these and now it's like, you know, here, there's an error and we have to, we have to figure this out. And when you potentially have survey errors and things like that, you're going through a lot of design work. And, and those things take time. It, it wasn't, I, I did, I don't think there's any ill will on, on either party here.
Some of the questions that are coming up and I just want to address, and I'm glad that we're talking, uh, talking about this today because I think this helps address some of the questions that have come up, uh, in the community. And, and, and we're glad that you're able to be as transparent as you can. Because again, it's, uh, it, it's, it's going to be a staple of the downtown Luddington area. It, it's a beautiful building. It's, it's, it's the ability to strengthen that end of Luddington Avenue, that block between South James Street and Wrath there, uh, that hasn't always been as strong as other areas, especially towards, towards the west there. So we appreciate you, you, you doing that. One of the questions that has come up is, um, a- and so looking at the timeline, you, you figured this out in May that they were too close to the road. Uh, in June, you did a, you had a, you had a survey done to, to figure out. And in that survey, uh, because other questions have come up about the other side of the road. Did, did that survey encompass the entire road? The three lanes there, you've got the right turn lane, you've got the center left turn lane. And, uh, and then you have, uh, the left, uh, the, the left, um, uh, you have two lanes on the east and, and one lane on, on the, on the west there. Did it encompass the entire road is the first part of my question. And the second part of the question is, was there an issue on the west side of the road as well? And if there was, can you address that?
There was not an issue on the west side of the road. The survey that we had done only encompassed curb to curb. There was a, the other side of the curb, there was a, a statement that was made by one of the team members for Andy's. That when the apartments were built, that the curb was.
More towards the east. Okay.
Correct. And it, the curb was not, it wasn't touched. There was some curb cuts further down to the south that were replaced, but the curb didn't move. What happened that, again, this is what we believe, right? And this is what we believe based on some, some back and forths with, with their team is that their surveyor measured instead of from the property line of that where the apartment building is on, they measured from where the actual building is placed on the property.
Okay.
So there's a few feet difference there and that matters. Um, so instead of measuring property line to property line, they measured from the front of the building and that building, that apartment building is not on the property line. Um, and that, and that messed with the measurement of their site plan. Um, what our, what our survey showed, um, is that the road width, one of the things that Andy's can do is the curb, when they poured the curb, they poured it about three inches to, I'm going to call it short.
Towards the east.
Towards the east, yes. So one of the things they can do to give themselves some more room to start getting to that one foot ten separation is repouring that curb another three inches to.
But that still won't resolve things because then you'll be at six, six to eight inches roughly.
Correct, but it will help, right? It, it'll give them some space. So they, so one of their concerns is that maybe they poured that curb too close to the east. And, and one of their concerns is that they poured it about a foot too close to the east. Well, it's about three inches too close to the east.
And the three inches that you are coming up with right now is based on the survey that was done. Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Correct, that we had done. So I, I know that this is frustrating for the public. I know that that press release felt frustrating. But if, for those who attend council meetings, we've been talking about this since May. In, in, in my, yeah, in my manager updates, um, and in some of our city council updates, we've been talking about the Andy's building. You know, every, every two weeks, there, there's an update on, you know, this is when, this is when this survey is or, you know, Andy's had their survey done. This is what it shows. This is when our survey is. Every two weeks, we're a little bit closer, right? And then so that press release for those who, I, I realize not everyone has time to attend city council meetings. And I don't expect that. But so to the majority of the people, this felt very abrupt. But from, if for those who attend city council meetings, this was expected. Andy's, Dr. Reamer, that, this was expected. There was not a, this wasn't like a stop work order was issued out of the blue, no warning. This was communicated in advance.
But it's certainly from the community standpoint, and you're right, from the community standpoint, it's, it felt like, okay, they're ready to open the doors and now, now they are, uh, stuck in the mud at this point or in the, in the concrete and can't, can't move. So, so do you mind sharing, I guess, uh, because I think hopefully this next question clears a lot up. What was the breaking point? Do you mind sharing that where you decided to put the stop? Because a, a question that just came up was if you had the survey done in June and it's August, why did it take so long to put a stop order in just before they were going to open?
So the, we really got the survey back June twenty seventh.
Okay.
Maybe. So it was essentially like July one, right? We got the survey back. We started going through the survey. We asked the surveyor to add some layers. Um, hey, can you layer on the site plan? Hey, can you layer on the, the overhang that was built? So really, I would say it was like the first week of July, we had everything we wanted on the survey. Um, to, to, to depict, you know, everything that we wanted. And then, you know, then we have the Fourth of July, right? So, so that kind of threw in, threw, threw in that curve ball. And then we decided, um, then we decided we would like, if we're going to, we were at polar opposites at that time with the Andy's team. They felt, they had a survey that showed one thing. Our survey showed complete opposite data.
Okay.
And that's because their survey, their surveyor was using building points as measurements and not property lines.
And, and you, you are, you feel that that's a fact?
Yes.
All right.
So, so at that point, we didn't have, we didn't have what I would call like a specialized land use zoning attorney.
Okay.
So that's when we hit the pause button and we sought out the services of, um, we had to go through that process internally, right? Um, so that took a little bit of time. I would say it took a full week for us to go through that process and just find someone that could work with us and help us. So that put us, you know, mid-July. And then we gave, we worked with the Andy's team for two full weeks. And gave them two separate deadlines, um, to submit like a, a corrective action plan for these columns and communicated the facts, the data that we had, what our survey showed, what, what the issues were. This is our process. These are the, this is what you have to do. You have to go to a site plan review. You have to go to the planning commission. These are your deadlines. These are the times. This is the information we need from you. Um, and the first deadline came and went and we didn't, um, I hope I get this right. I don't have the information in front of me. So this is where I don't, I just want to be careful. Please don't hold me towards. I believe the first deadline, they submitted something and it was not going to work. I believe that their, their hope was to leave the columns exactly where they were and just have the city approve that as is.
Which, which, which was fair to ask. I mean, a- any, anybody along that route a- a- and so deep into a construction project and so excited to want to open soon, would probably ask that in, in any, in any scenario. So, so that's fair for them to ask it. From the city standpoint, you really had two roads, uh, say, all right, let's, let's go ahead and make, you know, do this. Or hey, we've got some serious issues here. And I think I want to bring up. So Mike Johnson just, uh, uh, just posted in our Facebook comments. And he said, I plowed that street for twelve years and the old posts were cl- were, uh, close to the front plow. Uh, but it would be, uh, were close to the front plow, uh, but it would clear. These new posts are unpassable, uh, in these current positions. Uh, you can't just go around these posts, uh, then ice will build up and it will plug up, uh, plug, uh, will plug the catch, uh, basin, uh, drains also. So, so these are issues that you did communicate, uh, with the team from Andy's. Uh, and that's where it brings you to today where you say, hey, there isn't any, hey, we can approve it as is. That's out the window. That's not even going to be an option at this point, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so people have a- also asked then. A- a- and, and I, I, I can understand why this has come up, but it, it just, it doesn't completely make sense about making it a one-way street. Have you had discussions in regards to that?
No, no, and that's because we have, I mean, we have master plans. We have zoning documents. We have public, you know, various forms of public feedback over the, you know, last five years and different things that demonstrate what the public's intent desire, the city's desire is for Wrath to become when funding is available. And the intent for Wrath is to become more walkable for bike lanes to go down Wrath eventually. Um, so turning it into a, a one-way, it would be the city's cost. Um, you know, doing all of those things would be, would be the city's cost and there's not a budget for it right now.
Well, if you put bike lanes in, then, then, then the, uh, middle turn lane is going to become obsolete. You, there's only, you can only put two lanes on, on the width if you're having issues with, uh, space now. Uh, that means only, only two lanes and, and potentially bike lanes. A- and, 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 you know, that's obviously a, a possibility. Uh, if you are just joining us, we're talking with Caitlin Aldrich, City Manager of Luddington. Caitlin, uh, you know, uh, I had messaged you over the weekend and said, uh, hey, I want to be able to address, uh, this because people are talking about it, uh, out there. And I'm glad you are able to, to address it this morning. Prior to conversing, I did mention that my questions would be more poignant to you and, and I appreciate you addressing them, uh, to the community and you, and as far as some of the questions that are coming in, um, this has helped. Here is where I'd like to ask if there is, um, a turning point. And the turning point question is this. You had clearly said that there was some head, headbunting, uh, uh, in June, July. Uh, and now Andy's has submitted a, um, a proposal um, to, to, to resolve this. So I guess my question is, based on the proposal that has been submitted, do you feel like this will be resolved shortly? Or do you feel like this will be pushed into, you know, a springtime opening rather than a fall opening at, at this point? Wh- where do you stand on that?
So as, as for when the restaurant opens, that is completely up to Dr. Reamer, uh, right in his business plan. I, I don't know what, um, I am, I am far from knowing the best time when to open a restaurant. Um, so I will leave it up for him in his, his expertise. That is his field. But I, I, a, a plan has been submitted. We're going to site plan, um, I believe to site plan review um, later this week, I believe, maybe Friday even, Thursday or Friday. Um, and we're going to start that process. And, you know, as, as long as that plan is, um, something that, that the city can, can truly look at and, and we can, and we can, you know, e- accept, and the planning commission accepts, we're going to try to, you know, push that through, uh, you know, as quickly as we can to let his team continue, continue to work. Um, and so he, so he can open. Um, and actually, I'm sorry, I, the site plan review meeting is Tuesday. So it's site plan and.
Or next Tuesday?
This Tuesday and it's site plan and special land use review.
Okay, so the city is moving quickly to, to try to accommodate, uh, thi- this, uh, which, which is, which is good. Would you have in all of this process, or did you, from a city manager standpoint, sit down one-on-one with Andy and say, okay, how do we resolve this? What, what's, have you had a chance to do that?
No.
Would you have wanted that?
Um, I think that I'm, I'm always open to it, always.
Okay.
Always. I know that, um, there, there was a, ma- maybe a desire from, from the construction team earlier. But I, I will say that the desire at that time was simply to move the curb two feet or so west. And we just communicated through an email, um, that that was not an option.
Yeah, because the, the road becomes too skinny at that point, right? I mean, you, you, that, that turn lane is pretty skinny already.
Yes, and, and we don't, we don't mind sitting down and, and talking, but if, if it was for that purpose, we knew that that was not going to make it through planning commission and all of those boards. So if we were going to sit down and talk for that purpose, there wasn't, there wasn't a point in sitting down. there wasn't a point in sitting down and having that conversation because we could sit down as staff all day and talk about that idea, right? But it was never going to make it through a committee. So, um, so we, no, we did not sit down and talk about that.
On the submitted proposal, are these pillars going to, um, come down? Are, are, are they going to physically, um, well, they are, I mean, right? I mean, y- you, you have to move them back or they have to move them back, uh, towards the building. That seems like the only solution.
It is, it's my understanding that the proposal is to repour the curb, the three inches out further.
Okay.
And then to also remove the decorative fascia off the front of the columns. Because if you're looking at, I mean, sorry, the screen's only so wide. If you're looking at the columns and this is the front of the, you know, the front of the column closest to the curb, the actual supportive steel post is back here.
Yeah.
The rest of this space is just decoration.
Okay.
So I believe that they're going to shave this off.
Okay, towards the street, towards the street.
So I believe that what, what the plan that they submitted is between repouring the curb and then shaving off all of that decoration, they believe they can get the one foot in.
Okay. Uh, is there, uh, people are going to ask, and I know it has come up, is that, uh, is this solution the way that both, uh, Andy's and the city um, removes itself from any sort of litigation?
I, I believe so. I mean, I can't speak for, I can't speak for Dr. Reamer. Um, and I can't, I can't really speak for city council either, but I, it gets them to, to what they put on their site plan, right? That gets them to, what they put on their site plan was a one-foot ten setback. Um, and it, it, it gets us there. So
Does, will the city require the pillars to be adjusted before any other construction is finished?
I don't know. I don't know. That will be up to city council.
Okay, all right. More of a, let's see this before that, the, the sort of idea might, might be there. Um, there was some, and I don't know if it's rumors or what, but in the press release, it was not mentioned, but did the city have concerns inside the building and in the back of the building?
No.
Okay. So, so that sort of rumor or anything that, that, uh, of the construction or any sort of, sort of ideas is, is just rumor and it's not correct. The only issue is the pillars.
The, the pillars, I mean, the, the overhang is an issue in the sense that the overhang was constructed in the wrong spot. Um, but it's a non-issue because there's a very easy correction to fix it.
Okay.
We're just going to, um, the city gave Dr. Reamer and his team a, um, um, an easement to rebuild the overhang where it was on the old Michael's building.
Okay.
And instead it was built, shifted south about 13 feet.
Oh, okay.
Um, it's the same size, right? In terms of area.
Okay.
Was shifted down the building. Um, and we don't really have a problem with it. It's just shifted. So there was an easement that was recorded with the county register of deed that says where that overhang is, and it's actually shifted down further. So we need to re-record a new document that actually shows where that overhang is.
And so the city is comfortable resolving that. That's, that's something that, that is, is, is resolvable.
Yeah. So there will be two parts of this. Just one is, is a non-issue. We don't have safety concerns. There's nothing in the air, right? We don't have overhead lines. There's no future plans for anything that is, um, in our minds, it, right? It kind of is what it is and we can work with it. Um, um, but the, the columns are a little bit messier.
And it, and it looks like as we get closer to wrapping up, because I want you to make sure that you're able to, to do your day, to go to your meetings and such. But I think that this has been refreshing in regards to, um, some of the questions that were out there. And of course, there's going to be some other questions, but it, it certainly sounds like the city and, and the, the team from Andy's are now working to a resolve rather than uh, in each, in, in their own separate corners. Fair to ask that question? Is that a yes response, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. So, so this is, is continuing, uh, to, to, uh, to a resolve so that they can eventually open. Um, that, you know, I, 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 unless you have any other things that you want to address, uh, it sounds like, uh, it sounds like, uh, things are, things are progressing. Is there anything that you feel like, um, is there concerns that the community might have or some uh, questions, or I hate to even say the word rumors, but sometimes it's, it's easy to address these as much as possible. Uh, you know, in the media, um, you know, we saw that the Daily News put out a story. We saw that MCP put out a story. Um, but hopefully the follow-up that has been done today, uh, will resolve that. Anything else that you want to, uh, to let the community know?
I don't, I guess my only other comment would be I, sure, do we wish the resolution would have been easier? Yes, on both parts, uh, on both sides. Um, I'm sure that the city could be simpler to work with and I'm sure from a private developer's perspective, you know, they could be simpler to work with. But it's a significant investment on both parts on both, you know, on both sides. And we're, we're really excited to see what this becomes and, um, it's, it's a beautiful building. I mean, it's, it really is incredible. Um, and if I, I think I would be a little frustrated to see those pillars have to become stripped down to a very basic steel post. Um, but I, I appreciate the, the willingness to, to come together and you know, it's, we, we had to do a little, you know, give and take to, to get where we are today. But I, I look forward to, I really look forward to the day that Andy's is able to open and, um, and, and be successful here in Luddington.
And I do have one more question. I, i- do you feel like there is, um, there's an issue, is there going to be an issue that comes up at all? Uh, until the doors open? And, and here's why I ask. Um, it was, it's been two ye- two years, right? Two, two years, uh, of construction. This was found out by looking at it visually saying, okay, we have an issue here. Is there any other issues that you feel, have you exhausted any other current issues? Has, um, the inspector gone in, looked at things, said, okay, we're, you guys are on track? Is there, is there going to be more, is there going to be due diligence now moving forward with this particular property or even other properties? And I, and I'm not trying to push blame on either because really it sounded like the only time you could feel that this was, um, that, that you, the only time that this became an issue was when it was done, when you had to look at, when you looked at it and said, okay, this is not in the right spot. What's being done from the city's standpoint for any business, not just Andy's, but any business moving forward, so that they don't get into a situation like this?
I mean, it's the, you know, implementing a UDO, Unified Development Ordinance is certainly help, helpful um, in terms of having a, a better, more robust, um, development process. Um, we also, you know, we've talked internally, you know, we have one person, our building inspector, wearing four hats. Um, and you know, how do we, how do we support him better? You know, not that, not that a mistake was made, um, or anything like that, but how do we, um, how do we provide more sets of eyes on something like this? Um, and you know, that's something that we've been, we've been talking about in, in, you know, internally, uh, you know, a lot because we, we don't want, we would like to prevent things like this from happening. Um, and so one of the things, at least in regard to the overhang, is, um, they received permission, they received essentially, I guess, a license in this case from the special land use, uh, board or committee uh, to rebuild that overhang. But then on their site plan, it showed that that overhang was going to be shifted outside of that licensed area. Well, in this particular case, the site plan didn't dictate where that overhang was going to go. Because the special land use said where it was going to go.
Okay.
Um, so moving forward, maybe we have a document that shows both of those overlapped on top of each other, right? Like, like let, if someone receives special permission and special land use, we require on their site plan a separate page or something that shows an overlap. You know, some sort of dotted line, um, on top of the site plan. So we've just been talking about different things. And I know to certain people, this doesn't make any sense, but, um, I'm a visual person, right? I've got to see it in my office. Um, and what's nice is now the, the special land use and the site plan committee meets together because of the way the UDO process happens. Where before the UDO, a year ago, back when the Andy's building was approved, they didn't meet together.
Okay.
They were two separate committees and they never crossed paths. Now they meet together.
So, so things have, uh, adapted because of, because of this, which is a good thing from the city's standpoint, which ultimately will be good for any business that wants to develop uh, and open and build and so on and so forth in the, the downtown, in the Luddington area. Uh, so, so things, there are good things that come from this, of course, uh, being able to get Andy's to be open, uh, soon. Uh, for the city to, um, uh, and, and we see this, you know, over history and, and time that, you know, things need to be adjusted and things, um, uh, because of this, we, it led to that. And I think that's, that's an okay standpoint.
Well, well, just to be clear, the, it, it adapted, like this process adapted because of the UDO.
Okay, okay.
Yep. So, yeah, so not because of what this situation. Um, it adapted just because of the Unified Development Ordinance and the processes that were thought of and, um, developed because of that, not because of the Andy situation.
Okay.
So, you know, you know, moving forward, I, you know, ideally this won't, won't happen again, but still, you know, we've got to work through those things internally because, you know, we don't want to get here. We don't want to discourage developers. Um, we would li- like to see Dr. Reamer be successful. Um, he clearly is successful. Um, but we would like to not be a roadblock for him, um, here, here in town, Luddington.
A- and sometimes, you know, it just takes, uh, you know, uh, and communication between the, the two important parties, you and, 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 and Dr. Reamer and say, hey, let's, let's sit down and hopefully that, uh, if there's any other issues in the future, that, then you kind of get through the gray and the cloud and all of that stuff. And sometimes you need to, you need to be able to do that. But it sounds like you are all on the right track at, at this point, or at least we, we hope that. Uh, it sounds like September might be, um, uh, when things are, you know, permissions are, if not sooner, uh, that permissions, uh, for them to continue construction. Unfortunately, based on everything that we've talked about today, it sounds like Wrath is going to close down at least one of the lanes uh, during, uh, some, some, uh, ref- repouring of the, of the curb potentially. Uh, if the three inches do need to be expanded, uh, and obviously the, um, the pillars need to be, um, uh, uh, shaved or however you want to, want to call that. There's going to be some inconvenience on that, uh, turn lane.
Yeah. So we'll work with, you know, there's some, a couple, a few businesses right there on that block of Wrath that will be impacted and they do have very specific open business hours and, you know, we'll work with them um, to try to limit the impact on their businesses, um, because they have already been uh, impacted greatly by this construction project. So, you know, we'll do our best to align the, or align what closures will be necessary, um, to, uh, you know, to work with both, um, you know, both keeping their businesses open and getting Andy's up and, up and running.
Absolutely. Well, Caitlin, uh, I appreciate you taking the time today. It was obviously a longer segment for us, but uh, sometimes, uh, when, uh, when there's not enough clarification out there uh, that we, we need to be able to do that. And that's where, uh, the media comes into play. That's when, uh, conversations like this uh, where we can, uh, sit down and talk and, and discuss and, and we appreciate the transparency that you have had this morning. Uh, and the ability to, uh, to be able to say, hey, we want to see a business, uh, get back to, to, uh, you know, becoming a business and, and serve the, the greater Luddington area. So thank you for taking the time this morning.
Thank you very much. I just want to, I just want to say that I, I know that they're not on with me right now, but uh, Heather Tychoski and, and Sean Reed are both excellent at what they do every day. And, um, they, I wouldn't be able to be on here and answer these questions without them. Um, so I just wanted to give them a shout out and, uh, say thank you for what they do and what they'll continue to do. Uh, in this project and many, many others.
Yeah. Cause you, you, you don't want to go backwards, especially in, in a, where you're at right now with the progress of, of this particular business. Or again, like we mentioned, have any concerns. And so having a team behind you to, uh, to be able to, to help facilitate that process is important. So thanks for, thanks for, uh, uh, sharing that with us. Uh, Caitlin, we will talk in a couple of weeks, uh, city council tonight, 6:00 PM at, on the, at the city council chambers. And hopefully, uh, we've resolved a lot of the questions that the community has had in regards to this topic. Uh, but if you still do have some questions, certainly we, uh, we encourage you to, uh, send those into us or directly to, to, uh, to you, Caitlin, and your team there. So thank you so much for being a part of the conversation today.
Thank you. Have a great week.
You too. It is 102 dot seven, Mom FM and Hot Country.